Police officers, firemen, all of our first responders, responders, please continue to be with them and stand by and keep them from harm. We ask for greatness and goodness for our young people to help them to continue to grow in your love and spirit. We thank you for all the things that you have done for our community and we pray for a blessing upon our entire county and our state and our nation. These blessings we asking your name. Amen.
Councilmember Dow has a introduction.
I would like to introduce these special guests from 3495. Our Girl Scouts are under the leadership of a very special woman, Anne Spinelli, wife of city attorney, city attorney's office, Mike Spinelli. So we're just really excited. I think this is the first time we've had a Girl Scout trip here since I've been on council. And I will be thrilled to be joining y'all tomorrow night at Council Street Baptist.
Oh, right.
Their meetings.
Do you know what leaders and pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the vow of the United States of America. To reform, to change, to stand as one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for that. Very vigorous version. I think we're gonna do that every week, every month or whatever we do because my council just doesn't the same energy into that as you do. I really appreciate that. Thank you so much for being here. Alrighty, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember John DeWarken.
Here.
Councilmember Lillian Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Gibson. Councilmember Will Brasington. Councilmember Russell Stahl. Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Here.
Mayor Knox White.
Alrighty, council, you have the minutes of October 28th, which will stand approved as submitted unless there are any objections or changes. If not, they are so approved. Moving on in our agenda, we have, I think we have somebody to speak to us, Mr. Clarence Thornton. It's three minutes for presentation. Following that, we have a special, special presentation.
Minister Clarence Thornton, I reside at 114 Dorfitt Street, Greenville, South Carolina. I'm gonna talk briefly about racism exists in our city employees. Racism exists in Greenville City employees. And I agree with Derek Quarrel that the United States Justice Department should investigate. Because if you mistreat your officers, then you know you mistreat your citizens. Councilman Dow asked a question. We got problems with county council argument. What's the same argument that we have here? Racism. In fact, fighting racism on county council. Lot of Gibson fighting racism on county council. Lot of county employees work for the city. The city manager, last city manager, recognized that problem. He brought in Mr. Brian Davis. Racism is growing in America. We saw the text messages with the college kids. Go back to slavery. Go back to slavery. How would you feel that with your children? Are we having this conversation with your children about racism in America? Blacks fought for our freedom in World War II, even in the Civil War. But we were still treated like second-class citizens. Racism is growing. Like I said, Martin Luther King gave his life fighting for employment, equal employment. He even came to Greenville, Greenville, South Carolina, Clausen Bakery. Derek Quarrel stood up for the officers. I can say that. And we didn't have to pass no amendment for him to stand up for them. What is this city council gonna do about standing up for their officers? You talk about racism in your day, but what about racism today? What are you going to do? Let us not forget those text messages. Martin Luther King said injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. We could cut flips like Simone Biles. We could draw all we can to help our country. And my last question is, have we got fixed that West Greenville yet? Is it repaired? Is it patched? Or is our children, or are our children still have to deal with rain coming in? You wouldn't do that to their children, so please don't do it to ours. Thank you.
We have a special presentation. And Ms. Manager, who's introducing this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. In honor of Veterans Day today, we have a special video that we'd like to share to honor those who have served our country.
Awesome. Very good. Thank you. Excellent. Good job by Glennis too. Recognition and appointments. Ms. Clerk. There you go.
Do they have their sheets? Okay.
Okay, Firefighters Pension Fund, Mayor, I'd like to recommend the appointment of Michael Tolleson to a full four-year term ending October 31st, 2028, for our Firefighters Pension Fund.
Okay. Any other nominations for that? If not all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. He is so appointed. Our Youth Commission.
Okay, our Youth Commission.
We're gonna have our, oh, yeah, come on up here.
They're coming.
Come on up, yes.
Yes, I am.
Co-chair.
Make a presentation here.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Erin Helsel, and I'm a senior at Greenville High School. I'm excited to serve as one of the co-chairs of the 2024-2025 City of Greenville Youth Commission this year. I would like to recognize some of our current members of the Youth Commission in attendance today. Please stand as I call your name. Alondra Rodriguez, Greenville High School. And Isabel Cart from Greenville High School. Please be seated.
Thank you.
Before we introduce our recommendations, I want to share that the Youth Commission met last month to brainstorm ideas and to get to know some of our newly appointed youth commissioners. We are so excited to serve together this year. We also had the opportunity to go on a tour of Greenville led by Mayor Knox White. He provided us with a great experience and insightful overview. Thank you for your time, Mayor White, and a big thank you to GreenLink Transit for the support as well. Please keep us in mind for other opportunities to learn and provide input. And now I'd like to go ahead and recommend our appointment, Thomas Bonnet, a junior at Greenville High School. Can you please stand?
Okay, thank you. Make a motion, Mr. Bonnet?
So move.
Second.
Okay, second. Any other nominations? All in favor of Mr. Bonnet, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. You're so named. Thank you very much for joining us here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Can I use advisor? Please raise your hand. The Youth Advisor.
And the, and the tour of downtown Greenville was actually the evening of the microburst. Remember that? And wow, memorable. Very memorable. We have a couple, we have the item of the consent agenda. I think we have a desire by Councilman Dow to separate out 11B for separate consideration. If there's no objection, we will do that.
Sure.
So we go along with consent agenda, 11A, C, and D.
Motion to approve.
Motion. Have a second. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember DeWarken.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Knox, Mayor White.
Aye. So named. Okay, we pick up the regular agenda. We'll start with item 11B.
An ordinance to annex approximately 1.57 acres of real property and 0.28 acre of adjacent right-of-way located on Guest Street, Orr Street, and Seth Street, and to provide the zoning designations of RNC.
Have a motion in a second.
So moved.
Motion second.
Second.
Okay. And you had a concern about the zoning, I understand.
Right. So, so this is, we're now at second reading. At first reading, I brought this up and have had some time since to talk with some people about it. So let's recap where it is. Can we get to the picture that shows it?
Yeah.
The aerial view? This is adjacent to Mills Mill, you know, where those.
On the way to the hospital.
On the way to the hospital. Condos are, yeah. And I want to say a couple of things. First off, right out of the gate, I don't have any problem with annexing it. I absolutely would love to annex this area. Where I struggled at first reading was that you can see at one time, it was probably single-family homes, right? Probably Mill Village. One parcel, the reason this jumped out at me, I mentioned, was the person who lives there is on my Mills on Wheels route. So as soon as I saw it, you know, I kind of had a personal reaction to it. I have driven by there and seen they are renovating that parcel that's excluded from it. Okay, so what has happened since then? And my concerns were that we're annexing it and look to the left along Orr, and you can see single-family houses right there. Certainly, I can see the need for commercial, low, you know, mixed use on Guest. But once I get right up to the single-family residences, which granted are in the county, I just have a bad reaction to what could come for them. And although they are not in the county, we protect neighborhoods and try and protect all of our neighborhoods that we can, even the ones contiguous to us. It came to PC, the PC last week. Councilmember Eldridge pointed out that there had been a philosophy or a pattern of when we annex and rezone, we go like-for-like. So in the county, it's owned R seven and a half, right? 7.5. Talk about crazy zoning thing. So, single-family. We're trying to bring it in and make it RNC, which allows for that, we call it mixed middle, duplexes, triplexes, duplexes, whatever you want to call it.
Up to four, right?
Right.
Okay.
And, and, you know, it allows a certain width, minimum and maximum. Step backs would apply, all those things. So it passed PC by a vote of 6-1, but her sentiments were the same as mine, that it's right-footed up against these single families. And we're annexing it into a zoning that's not like-for-like if we're coming out of R 7.5. The next thing that has occurred is I spoke to the developer's representative this afternoon, whose name is escaping me right now. I said, hey, what do we know about what they want to build? What they want to build, the owners who own the property directly across the street, they want to build townhome rentals. Okay? Townhome rentals. Mary Douglas, if you know of anything that more than this that they've expressed to you, please chime in. My understanding is attached townhome for rent, townhome rentals for rent. There's no, well, he feels like they could fit 13. Okay? There are floodplain issues on here. My, my point in all of this is, can we postpone and see if we can get a better outcome? That I really would like to be respectful of the neighborhood adjacent to it, what they want. In fact, after, I talked with them after the PC and they thought, hmm, maybe we want to annex, which would be great. But I just don't see a transition zone in play between attached market-rate rental townhomes and these single-family homes right behind them. And that's what concerns me, that we are imposing on an existing neighborhood that is not in the city.
I agree.
So you're proposing to postpone?
I'd like, I'd just like to see if we could get a little more time. I don't, I, you know, in talking with the developer's representative, he understood and said, maybe we can get to a better, you know, I'd at least like to see some kind of layout of it, you know?
Did we get the rationale from planning staff at the last meeting? I can't recall. I mean, this is second vote to your point, but.
Yeah, we can talk a little bit more if you would like.
I mean, if we postpone it from my standpoint, fine. But either way, I think it'd be good to hear why this was originally presented in the manner that it is, because I don't know that we did last.
I think we, there does raise some issues, but I would like to point out, though, that we have Millside Circle there right next to it, which is multifamily. And I do, that parcel that's at the end of Lake Circle Drive or whatever is interesting. That, that's kind of, maybe that's problematical. But the rest of it, I mean, we're trying as a city to encourage townhomes and duplexes and quadruplexes. That's what we're all about in the 2040 plan and everything else. So it wouldn't surprise me if we have an opportunity to see that, especially along Guest Street. It would be a large part of that project. I think that's a very legitimate and good thing for density purposes.
Yes, so I can address some of the questions, Mayor and Council. We, so planning staff has been working with the applicant for several months now. And this area has been identified for missing middle housing. Which is, that are in designation. It looks like a house, but it's multifamily. They're looking at maybe 11 to 13 townhomes, primarily for nurses and others that can't afford some of the units in town. So RNC is what we were recommending based on the fact that the Millside Circle just adjacent is RNC. And then you have RNXC across the street on Guest. And as Councilmember Dow mentioned, the floodplain is significant on kind of those western parcels. And so they're looking to do the townhouses lining Guest and Seth Streets. Currently, they're mostly vacant now.
I support that we kind of postponed it a little bit just to get a better feel for it because it's almost similar to when we were having some other issues in that same area, that 13 is a little much for that particular area. It's very tight. And I guess it's like these little, little tiny houses. And that, they look like smaller, how many houses rather than the middle? I thought middle housing would look a little bit different than this, anyway, but.
I don't think a missing middle is quadplexes, triplexes.
It's, you know, townhouses, quadplexes, all of that.
Isn't this where we had the Battle of the Trees like four years ago?
Yes, just adjacent, right there at Millside Circle.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, that was, when Millside Circle went in, that was controversial over that tree line, to your point, Councilmember Stahl. Those trees were mowed down for that.
And I will add that duplexes were prevalent in the Mill Villages. Many of those duplexes have been converted to single-family homes.
Do they have, do they have the, how do you describe the housing proposed in that last parcel that's, or by itself?
By itself.
At the end of Lake Circle Drive, the one that comes.
Right by itself.
It will be vacant.
It's, it's gonna be vacant?
Yes.
Oh, so it's like a buffer?
That's correct. And Austin Allen is here, the applicant.
So the development is, is in the U-shaped area?
Correct, facing Guest and Seth Streets.
Facing Guest and Seth. I'm just saying, this is, this is classic 2040 plan, everything we talk about. I don't see, especially if you tell me, I was concerned about it from the standpoint of that outer piece. But if everything else is very compatible with our, what we say we want to see, so.
Councilor Dow, what would you like to accomplish in, say, two weeks or months?
You know, I think it would be helpful if someone could do some kind of layout plan. If we know that 13 townhomes are planned for there, and they're market-rate rental. By the way, I mean, with all due respect, a starting nurse isn't going to be able to afford that. I'm just saying. I mean, let's not fool ourselves. There's no, there's no discussion of affordability in this, is my understanding. Although there could be, there's a density bonus allowed for that. You know, a layout would be good. That might not, they aren't held to doing that. You know, they aren't required to do that, and we can go ahead and vote. You know, I just think this, this, this has been a sensitive area for annexation already. This is not a like-for-like zoning in any way, shape, or form. Millside Circle did not come without objections from community members in that area, as I recall.
Yes.
And you've got one holdout there that just invested, you know, is. I agree, I agree with the specialist, which was Diane saying, excuse me, Commissioner Eldridge. I mean, she saw it too.
Are we aware of concern expressed from the neighborhood at this point?
They did. You want to talk about, someone spoke at Planning Commission?
Just Commissioner Eldridge talking about the height of that. And then we did have one resident from Chestnut Street, which is not right here, it's on down, but she was just wondering.
What about the person that's been asked out?
Wondering.
No, just more asking about what the plan was for the property.
Where is Austin? There, he's way in the back. Look at you. My understanding is they tried to buy the home from, from that person and they did not want to sell.
That's correct.
There's a lot of uncertainty in the abutting neighborhood. I would just put it that way.
You know, I mean, reserving my rights to vote either way, I don't mind, in the spirit of this body.
Two, two weeks is fine.
Yep.
I would ask that if you do postpone, that you postpone to a date certain, so we know when to put the item back on the agenda. And we'll work to provide additional information between now and the next meeting.
I could support.
Are there no renderings of this project?
I have a, we just have a subdivision layout. Again, Mr. Mayor, it's just a zoning and an annexation, and at this point, that's all that's required under the law.
Yeah, right, yeah.
We wouldn't.
And that hasn't been in the public record, correct?
We would not have any renderings of the project at this time. It's too early.
I would echo what Councilwoman DeWarken said, in the spirit of the body and in the spirit of just getting it right, I would support a two-week stay.
So I'll make a motion to postpone for two weeks.
I'll take it as a unanimous to postpone and be up in two weeks.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alrighty, rigor 15A.
15A, an ordinance to appropriate $1,578,284 in the Capital Projects Fund for construction and repair of the Southern Side and Viola Multi-Service Centers.
So move.
Second.
Discussing questions?
Ever going to let Brandon speak at the podium?
Oh, yes.
Brandon?
Okay, Brandon, will you show us pictures at some point of the render of this, at some point, send it to us. Thank you.
Okay, alright.
I appreciate it.
Well, this is, this is just an appropriation of funding from the, from the Viola tax, from the TIF.
Yes.
The balance of the TIF to fund the projects. This is a necessary step. Council's been apprised of it.
Yes.
Close about that.
That's right.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.
Alright, clerk call the roll.
Councilman?
Under order, is there a moment that I may express what was on the calendar with regard to Viola as the vice president?
Oh, yeah, sure. Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Mayor, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Ose Benson. I am the president of the Viola Neighborhood. I am advocating for the essential funding of the rebuild of the community center right there in the Thompson Gardner Park. There in Viola, it's crucial for our residents to provide a larger space for after-school activities, community meetings, senior programs. As you guys know, the current center is inadequate. It is not up to code. That is why we have made the decision in collaboration with the city, and Shannon's been involved, Brandon has been involved, with making sure that there are enough resources to tear down the current building and rebuild hopefully a larger, state-of-the-art, more usable facility for our residents. Investing in this bigger building will enhance the quality of life for the residents, fostering engagement and enjoyment for the safe environment of our children. I am, I urge you to support the funding. I do see that there is a number there. This is going to be a substantial cost. And this is something that has been, we've had long conversations about this project since COVID. This rebuild needs to be longstanding. It needs to be up to code. It needs to be a, a place where our children and residents and seniors can come to receive services. So we want to empower our neighborhood to also dictate its use. We do understand that it is a city of Greenville building. But as the president and as the residents, and I stand here on behalf of them after having numerous meetings with them about what, how they want to use that building and how they want to use that center, we want to prioritize that we have inputs, that if there were to be an organization that were to lease from that building, that they come to us, that we ensure that the residents' needs are being met as a priority. I thank you for your time. I know that I wasn't on the calendar originally, so thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Well, Ose, when you came walking in, I thought, well, she must have something to say. Happy to hear from you. It's true, a lot of outside groups now use the park, and that's a good thing. That's a good thing. That's very impressive to me that it's become one of those kind of regional opportunities, the park space for cookouts and things for all kind of people. But you certainly need to prioritize it for the neighborhood as well, so we understand that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
One thing I want to add, I also thank you so much for coming. I am so excited, unrelated to this, I am so excited because I know Clint, we're getting closer to our high-end, high-efficient pedestrian crossing that's going to get a lot of those kids back and forth across Stone Ave to the park, to the Stone Academy. So we're getting very, very close.
Appreciate that, John. So much appreciated. And I would be remiss not to also, Dorothy, my daughter is at Duke University.
Duke University about your daughter.
The alumni, I send you their greetings when I was, when we told them that we were from Greenville, South Carolina.
I know exactly who to talk to.
So thank you, Council again.
Okay, thank you. A little off the topic there, but nonetheless, I'll let you do that.
That's also, that's also the reason the TIF was created, so.
Yeah.
Councilmember DeWarken.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington. Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15B.
An ordinance amending Chapter 8, Section 16, appeals to revenue administrator of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Greenville to provide for a hearing offer.
Second.
Motion second. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember DeWarken.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington. Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. That's it.
That's it.
Madam Manager, you want to make a?
Yes, I have a couple of staff reports, Mr. Mayor.
Sure we do.
Yes, I do. First, I would like to give you an update on our debris hauling, and this is important information for our community. So we want to make sure that we get this out. As of today, Crowder Gulf, who is our contractor, has collected over 327,445 cubic yards of vegetative waste. And they have picked up over 6,000 loads of vegetative waste in the city alone. In addition, over 88,185 cubic yards of vegetative waste has been ground and delivered to the mulch diller that we have in Greenville County. And Public Works has also collected hundreds of smaller loads to expedite the cleanup. With that said, we have completed the first pass on all streets within the city limits. Last week, the team began their second pass with trucks in each of our four different solid. with trucks in each of our four different solid waste collection days. So we're basing it on our solid waste routes. Our plan is to follow each of the five routes within the four collection days until all 20 zones are completed. So we have 20 zones to complete. As of today, 10 zones have been completed. So we are halfway there since they started last week. And we expect that this work will take us until Thanksgiving to complete, depending on the final amounts of vegetative waste curbside. Stump splitting and collection will begin early this week. So you're here... You've been receiving calls about stumps, and that starts this week. Crowder Golf will shut down the operation from Thursday, November 28th, which is Thanksgiving, until Monday, December 9th. And that's to allow their team to have a break, because no one's had a break since this all began. On Monday, December 9th, this is the important thing, we will begin our final pass on each street. So we ask everyone that has debris to get out to the curb, that it must be out there by Monday, December 9th, because that's when we will start our final passes. That probably will take two to three weeks. But we know that... I mean, we did passes last week. We already have three that's been placed back out on those curbs since we did our passes. The final pass will take... Will begin on Monday, November 9th.
December 9th.
I mean, December 9th. I'm so sorry. December 9th. Most importantly to know is there will be no callbacks after the final pass has been made and the street declared finished. And I think that we've done, if I may say so myself, about... I think that we've been very responsive to individual and calls that we've received about needing to go and take care of debris, especially when there's been... We've already picked up, and then something gets put back out there. And so I want to make sure that everyone knows that unfortunately, we won't be able to do that after the final passes are complete. So as we finish the streets, residents will need to return to the six-inch diameter, six-foot-long yard waste rule that our solid waste team can collect. So that will take place after final pass. And anything larger than that would be the responsibility of the resident. I want to thank our Public Works team for overseeing this endeavor. They have done an amazing job. And to date, we have completed the largest hauling operation the city has ever completed on record. As a reminder, we collected 41,000 cubic yards of debris during the ice storm in the early 2000s. I think that was 2005. Also, I want to thank our contractors, Crowder Golf and Tetra Tech, for their partnership in cleaning up our community. They've been great to work with. You know, we've... I think we're way ahead of the game in terms of vegetative waste pickup. We appreciate our community's grace with us over these past few weeks. We appreciate their patience. Everyone has been very understanding. And we just want to make sure that everyone knows our final dates for the vegetative waste cleanup so that they have an opportunity to get their debris out. Remember, this is for residential properties. We don't pick up for commercial. Wanted to get that message out. We'll start spreading that message tomorrow on social media. We hope you all will help us spread that message. But thank you for the opportunity to provide that information this evening.
How long will that final pass on December 9th last?
About three weeks, two to three weeks.
Through Christmas?
Yeah.
And...
But if it's not out by the 9th, we can't guarantee we would come and get it, because we don't know exactly where the trucks will be each of those days. So that's why we're asking everybody to have the debris out by Monday, December 9th.
And what do you hear about from Duke, about power lines? They're still down, still on the ground?